All right, I call this board meeting to order. Member Haben is absent and Chuck Henches is absent also with the remainder of the board present. If we could stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God into this soul with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alun.
Second.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
First, the agenda is approved. Item four, celebration of excellence for Recoree Proud. So because of COVID, we are still wanting to recognize some of the great accomplishments that some of our students have done in our district. And so instead of having them present here today, we are going to be doing a little PowerPoint presentation to acknowledge some of those successes. So.
Yep. So Chair Lees, the first Recoree Proud to recognize is Paige Mufflerman. Paige competed for the St. Card Brickerys, which Recoree is part of as a cooperative with a number of area schools. And Paige competed in the Alpine or the downhill ski portion of the The second report, Recoree Proud tonight is the Recoree Dance Team. They're a team participant in both the Jazz and the Kick. And their coach is Leah Frank. Unfortunately, the girls were not able to participate due to COVID. The third Recoree Proud recognition tonight is the River Lakes Girls Hockey Team. Again, another cooperative of which Recoree is a part of. Gainesville, Eden Valley Rockins, Albany, Levens Fosser, St. John's Prep. I'm missing one. BEE, thank you. And this was the first time in their 24-year history that the River Lakes Girls, or either one of the hockey programs qualified for the state meet. They took on the number one seed Gentry in the first round and lost. Due to the COVID, there was no playbacks this year. Austin Marashow is a wrestler at 152 pounds for the Spartans. He qualified for his third straight state tournament as an individual. He unfortunately got the matchup with the number three ranked kid in the nation in his first round, Kidout Assembly, who was going to Cornell to wrestle. So he had a tough try. And then our last award, our last team to award tonight is the Vex Robotics Team. They were state participants. And there you see the A and B, they're mostly juniors and seniors team. And one of the teams has qualified to go on to the Worlds, and I think it's a virtual world. Last year, they went to Detroit. This year, because of COVID, they had to do it virtually. But one of their teams, I think Team A, has qualified for the Worlds. So good job to the Vex Robotics. And their advisor is Kristi One. So those are the Recoree Prouds. And we can't wait to be able to have those Recoree Prouds in person again.
Yes. So congratulations to all those students and the success that they had in their events or athletics. So that's awesome. So. All right. Comments and questions from the visitors? We have some people that have signed up to provide comments. So just if you could, when I call your name, just say your name, what town you're from. It looks like the main topic of discussion here from the people present is for the dance team. And just a reminder that there is a sheet that talks about the guidelines. So we're not going to be allowing any specific complaints that identify staff or students. And any comments that are directed at an individual that are confidential of personal nature are not appropriate. So and if you find that when I call your name, that you've, somebody else has contributed similar comments that you would maybe say, if you feel like you want to pass because of that, if you're going to say similar things, that would be great. If you feel like you have something else to offer to the discussion that hasn't been said, then surely take your time that you've signed up for. And then we'll try to keep it to five minutes maximum for each person regarding the comments. So first person, we have Sarah and Claire Paulson. If we could just have one of those. That would be.
I'm Sarah.
Sarah.
Paulson.
Paulson.
Yeah, thank you. I am here tonight because on the agenda is the resignations of all the dance team coaches. And I am here just to ask the board to possibly hold off on accepting those resignations at this time and consider some of the current dance teams' feedback on how they feel their team should be handled with coach by going forward. My experience with the team is somewhat short-term. It's been only two years that my daughter's been part of the varsity team. And her experience has been amazing. The team is a wonderful place for her to learn how to be accountable, how to build teamwork, how to have goals and set those goals and achieve those goals. And I think the coaching staff has done a great job over the years to get them to that. So that's what I'm here to state and ask for. Thank you.
Thank you. And did Claire, did you honor? Okay. The next, the next person was Megan Schneider.
I'm the past.
Past, okay. Scott Style.
My name is Scott Style from Richmond. And similar to that, I am here also to ask the board to hold off on the resignations. But mainly, I'm here to ask the board to consider a full review and investigation of what led to the resignations of the entire dance team. I believe we're dealing with a forced resignation in the result of Leah Frank, the head coach. And I believe we're dealing with subsequent supportive resignations of the head coach when it comes to the other five coaches that have all resigned. I don't say use that term lightly because there are ramifications for such a thing. But again, I ask the board, before you consider these resignations, you do a full review or investigation to the best you can of why all these coaches resigned. Lastly, this has been, I'm sure as you alluded to, this has been a tough year for the dancers. They made it to state, qualified both Jazz and Kick. They have a great bunch of girls. There are a lot more here tonight. They weren't able to perform down at state. It was a sad situation. Now they're here dealing with the resignation of all the coaches. So if you don't want to do the investigation for the parents that are here, I ask that you do the investigation for the dancers that are here. I think we can avoid a lot of situation by looking into these, looking into this. I'm not going to get into why I solicited for this resignation. But if any of you have been on social media, you understand this. And I don't give social media a lot of credibility. But when people, employees of the high school are using wrong names and are getting involved in this, then there is a problem. So again, I'm asking for, on behalf of the dancers and behalf of Leah Frank, the head coach, that we do a full investigation as to why all these coaches are resigning effective tonight, I guess. So and that's all. You there.
Okay, thank you. Jaden Style, did you?
So I'm Jaden Style.
I'm Taylor Thomas.
I'm from Richmond.
I'm from St. Joe.
And we will be seniors of the dance team next year.
Next year.
It is fun. But I don't know, I would just ask that you guys hold off the resignation and hopefully look deeper into it. Because I can't speak for the entire dance team, obviously. But for most of the girls that have showed up tonight, we really support the coaches and have like succeeded a lot with that type of coaching style and our coaching staff. And we've really bonded with them. So on behalf of the girls that are here and are choosing to speak and many more who couldn't be here tonight, I just ask that you please hold off and just look a little bit deeper and maybe talk to some other dancers on the team so we can share our side of the story.
Yeah, I think with the coaches that we've had, we have really adapted to the way that they coached us. And like, we're all one big family together. And I just think that like, without the coaches, it would not be the same. And I think, I don't know, I just don't think it's, it's hard to, it's like notice that your coaches have just been resigned with really no word from the school or anything and no explanation as to why. We just didn't really get it. It was just so unexpected from us. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Darren Orback. I have a daughter in dance also. Very interesting here with COVID. I think it's put a lot of intensity into things where we definitely don't need them. Some people are very reactive. It changes people's psyche a little bit, perspectives and attitudes. But my daughter's been in dance for a number of years now. And the coaching staff there really is phenomenal. The responsibility they teach them, the dedication, and the attitude is amazing to me. I look at the girls here, a lot of them dance and all this kind of just blowing away. Sad part is a lot of people think dance is too tough. They don't really look at it as like football or basketball or soccer ball. It's because they don't pay attention. It's a very difficult sport. It's a very challenging sport. And when you go to the people that are the coaches, it's a very tough, a very tough thing to coach. It's not like coaching a football team. You're getting a lot of girls, a lot of mothers, some fathers do, and you don't mean. You can't figure that out. It's a sad thing to get them to pay attention to. And you've got to be careful with this situation with dancers. If some that are not going to make it, the coaches have been very forward to this in the past. They've got to be careful. They want to be the best. You really have to have your best kids perform. And I think they're pretty set up as a group. If some people can't make it, they usually understand, like, my daughter didn't make it. She was our girlfriend for two years. She had nothing bad to say about the coaches. It was only herself that she talked about and that she hadn't improved. That's good coaching. So I just want you to understand, and I get it, that these people are saying here, you better really evaluate the decision here and understand what's going on. Because the loss to these kids, I don't care, we hire what you do, it's not going to be there. These kids know. I don't know if you do it or not. And there have been some accusations, obviously. I'm quite confident of it, we don't beat it. And I hope you're looking at all sides of the view. And I'm just taking a few negative commentaries and blowing out of proportion. Because I know if there are some, it's going to be very minor. And I know the positives are going to be very heavily weighted against them. And this proves it right here. Look at this group. So again, as they say, I hope you really do not accept these resignations, by the way. You better insight it, look into it. Because you're really tearing up the hearts of a lot of kids here. I think there's something being mishandled. Like, there's emotions that are going to die. Again, it's been COVID year. But I think there's definitely been some inappropriate decisions here. So I'm sticking up there. And if it does fall through, I'm sure me and some others, we will continue on with this. Because we all know more than I know. People can't speak because they got to worry about, you know, legalities and so forth. But I think, I think this stuff going improper on the concept. So I hope you look at the people that you're working with, evaluate the situation very closely.
All right, thank you. Michelle Beard, past. Grace, Gracie Beard? Grace, Gracie Bearden?
I'm Gracie Bearden. I'm from St. Joe. And I just want to ask that you further investigate the resignation of all of our coaches. I have been in our recording team for three years. And I have nothing bad to say about any one of those coaches. They have done a lot for me. I've been in dance for quite a while now. And these coaches are by far the best people that I've ever had to coach me. They help you a lot, not just in dance, but outside of dance, too. And like I was saying earlier, they're like family. And just to see them resign with very no explanation was a lot taken from a lot of us. So that's all I want to ask, is that you guys further investigate the resignation.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Jamie Owen? Did you speak?
I'm Jamie. I'm from Coltsburg. I've been in the dance team for three years now. And our coaches have gone us to where we need to be. They ignored us. They kept us together as one. And all of us as a team, but including them. And so I just hope you can look further into it and hold off.
All right. So that is the list of people that had signed up to speak tonight. So thank you for your input and we appreciate your time coming out and giving your perspective. Thank you. So that brings us to the rest of our agenda, which we have the consent agenda. And that consent agenda has the resignations in that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or is there any item that people want to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion or approval?
Does anybody want to discuss the resignations? Do we pull it or not?
All right, well, I need a motion to either approve it or pull the resignations for discussion after that. So, what, does someone want to make a motion for either or? And then we could take a vote on that.
Do you want to use your name, please?
I think what we need to, yeah, we need to pull the resignations of the dance coaches at this point because I don't think it should be part of the consent agenda.
Okay, so motion by Lynn to pull the resignations from the consent agenda. Of just the dance people, because some of the other people, it's very tiring. So of the resignations of the dance coaches. So Lynn wants to pull that, so is then, then a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those?
Yeah, I can make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
Second by Jennifer. Motion by Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so then, item, we'll call it six F would be the resignation of the dance coaches. So some discussion regarding that piece. I guess I just want to say, you know, I definitely appreciate the passion and the, the support that the community has obviously come out tonight for the coaches. And this is a difficult decision because it's, you know, the resignations that they provide don't really have any detail to them, as you said. So I don't know. Mr. Cavington, do you have any recommendations or thoughts on the direction we need to?
Again, as Mr. Wiesenberg said, this is a difficult decision for the district to have to make. I understand the passion behind what our dancers and their parents are saying. The coaches did submit their resignations. And so the board has to consider that. I, again, I hear what you're saying, that we want a more full investigation, but the coaches did submit their resignations. And so that's something that you have to act on.
Yeah, can we address the board?
No. You had your opportunity, so, yeah.
I was going to say.
Well, I'm not here to, I mean, I'm just to address the issue. I don't even hear what we're talking about.
I think from our perspective, we, we have, to Brad's point, we have resignations to approve. I understand that the public here have claimed that there's more to it than that. I don't know that we have any information that supports or refutes that at this point.
Which implies we have to run an investigation.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is it?
Okay, you know, this is the discussion, we're not having discussion with the crowd and I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just trying to keep order. And the order now is that we're having the discussion. So you've had a chance to provide the feedback and now we have to. So I definitely appreciate that and I'm not trying to minimize or not include you, but you've had your opportunity and now you have to stick to the, to the agenda, so. So, I don't know, any thoughts from Jennifer or Lynn on this piece?
I guess my thought is we have resignations that were submitted by individuals, albeit unfortunate. We don't have any detail from the individual on that. They have, are not here to speak for themselves about the reasons why. If we were to not accept them, I'm not sure what the practical outcome of that would be. There's, so then what happens? I guess would be my question. Do we have any, do we have any information that suggests from each of these individual resignations that they're claiming any wrongdoing?
How do, I'm not sure how, if they're claiming wrongdoing?
So in each of the individual resignations that we've received from the dance coach, coaches, have any of the resignations, or has there been any thing brought to you indicating that they're resigning due to wrongdoing toward them?
Oh, no, no communication.
Yeah, the thing is, even though they put in resignations, that's, these positions are filled each year.
These are at-will positions. The assistant coaches do not have, they don't have as much, I don't want to say protection, but they are more at-will than the head coach. The head coach does have some protection under statute.
But they could be, they could be hired back if they choose to.
The assistant coaches could be hired back if they, if they chose to apply.
From the standpoint of procedure, because they put in resignations and there's no, we don't have any information, technically, we probably have to accept them, allow them to reapply if conditions change, that they choose to reapply.
Yes, again, once the positions became open, they could choose to reapply.
I'm just looking at the technical because, because we have no more information, because they resigned, we kind of have to accept people's resignations at this point and.
And regardless of whether we accept the resignations or not, if based on the feedback that we're hearing today, we feel that it should be looked into further, you could still do that regardless of accepting resignations, correct?
Correct.
And what would the precedent for resignations? I mean, usually we get the resignation and then it's acted on with the next board meeting.
Correct.
Is there any precedent for?
In my 30-plus years of education, I have never seen a resignation not accepted.
Okay, so just to make sure that, that I understand what we just said prior to that. If we were to accept these resignations and based on what's being shared here tonight, if we felt that investigation was necessary, that could still happen.
It could be looked into further.
Okay.
Right. Well, I, I guess, I, I, and please, you know, this is a meeting of the board. And again, I appreciate the passion and the feedback, but we have to stay on task here. So I guess I'm hearing that, you know, there's an, some of the community concerns after this. And there is opportunity for some of those coaches potentially to be hired if they so choose. So just by accepting the resignation doesn't mean that that's completely terminating that as an option.
Well, again, so there is a difference between the terms termination and resignation. Termination is action taken by you to not hire them back. Okay, so what the head coach and the assistant coaches have chosen to do tonight is resign. So if they, if you accept those resignations, you can do that. And if you want me to look into why potentially those assistant coaches or the head coach is resigning, I can look into that further.
I guess I, I believe that that's the appropriate route to go. I feel like we've got resignations from adults who at this point haven't indicated any reason other than that they are choosing to resign. I understand that we have the public here asking us to look at things further. By accepting the resignation, we're not preventing that from happening. So I guess I would, I would make a motion to accept the resignations with the understanding that if it's appropriate to look into the concerns that have been brought forward, that that take place.
Motion by Sunny to accept the resignations with investigation as appropriate. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for acceptance of the resignations. All right, with investigation as appropriate, so. And thank you, everyone, for coming to share your perspective. Definitely appreciate that. Thank you. Item seven A, curriculum proposals for 2021, 2022.
So in front of you tonight, board, is the curriculum updates for the 2021 school year. This, these curriculum purchases have run through the curriculum instruction team, administrative team, and then the teaching and learning committee in there for your approval tonight. You heard and saw the presentation last time. I recommend approval of the, the improvements to our curriculum for next year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sunny.
Second.
Second by Lynn for approval of the curriculum proposal. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The curriculum proposal is approved. Item seven B, a non-renewal resolution.
So we'll be calling for a resolution, which is a roll call vote in regards to Mr. Gunn. Mr. Gunn is not licensed for the position that he'll be in for next year. And so we do need to non-renew him and open the position for a licensed teacher.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching conduct of a probationary teacher.
Motion by Sunny.
Second.
Second by Jennifer. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Motion carries and is approved for, the resolution is approved. Item seven C, approval of payment to Coltsburg Bakery in the amount of $96.40. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Motion by Jennifer.
Second.
Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pull.
Abstain.
Yep, Lynn abstains. Motion carries. Leave of absence request, seven D.
So Mr. Severson has accepted a job in a different district and he is asking for a leave of absence. And it is a high school special education teacher. And my recommendation to you is to not accept that leave of absence because that is a difficult position to fill. And to have one, have a person fill it for one year will not get the best candidates to apply.
So just to be clear, if, if we were to fill his position, we would have to advertise it as temporary, right?
We would, we would have to advertise it as a one-year position.
As a one-year position?
Correct.
If we were to approve the leave?
If we were to approve the leave.
Right, okay. Well, yeah. That attracts a different pool of candidates, for sure.
It's been pretty hard to get special ed teachers to apply at this point anyway because there's a limited number of people in the field.
Haven't we had discussions in the past about not, kind of drawing the line in the sand and not approving leaves like this going forward? I feel like that took place.
Yeah, and when some of the regulations or statutes were put in place to allow people to take leaves, it was back when there was a lot of teachers looking for jobs and it made sense for the state to put statutes in and then allowed for the leaves. But now that we're in a different situation where we can't fill positions, it just doesn't make sense to limit our ability to find good people for these positions because it's a temporary one.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, it definitely puts us in a difficult situation if we were to prove that in order to not only fill it, but then, you know, recruit, you know, and maintain that position with that one just standing out there, so.
I'll make a motion to deny the leave of absence request.
Motion by Sunny.
Second.
Second by Jennifer to deny the leave of absence request. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The leave of absence request for Mr. Severson is denied. A resolution to accept donations.
So we have two donations from Donors Choose totaling almost $1,000 for classroom materials, mostly in the fine arts area at the elementary. for classroom materials, mostly in the fine arts area at the elementary, Culture Bing Elementary. We regularly approve these with thanks for those people who choose that program to help our schools with those valuable supplies and curriculum.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to accept the donations.
Motion by Sunny to accept the resolution that accepts the donation. Second by Lynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution is approved. Discussion items, item eight A, policy. So these policies are coming back for a second reading from the policy committee, and so if there's any items of concern, definitely let us know before the next meeting when they come forward for a third reading. Again, we're trying to get the policies to follow the MSBA templates, so many of the changes are edits that were done by MSBA. Any other questions or discussion on those policies? Okay. Item nine A, superintendent report on enrollment update.
So enrollment, we did lose a few students over the last month. Those enrollments mostly came at CSE, and we actually just lost families out of state. Two of the families just left Minnesota altogether for different opportunities, and one family moved to a different school district. So we're still doing okay attendance, I'm sorry, enrollment-wise as we come into last month.
COVID update?
COVID update. So the State High School League came out last week with a change for COVID as far as the mask policy. So currently, our athletes will not have to wear masks while they are participating in an outdoor event. They still have to wear it out. For example, if they go into a dugout, they still have to wear them while they're seated in the dugout. But while they're actually on the field playing, they do not have to wear the masks. All other adults are still required to wear masks at events. The other update from COVID is vaccinations. And as I sent to our families on Friday, they are opening up to sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds, and Central Care in Stearns County has reached out to us to provide clinics. I did get a piece of information from MDE today with some vaccination clinics that are happening in our area. I will be sending that out to our families tomorrow. I want to make sure that our families understand that this is voluntary, and should Riquori Schools have a clinic on its grounds, they would be required consent. So parents are going to have to consent to a sixteen- and seventeen-year-old, and also, we will go one step further and require the parent to be there in attendance. Legislative update is my, I think is my next topic. And so over the week, or at the end of the week last week, both the House and the Senate passed their versions of their omnibus bill. So what happens now is each House and Senate group will pick five members to be on the conference committee, and that conference committee will then hammer out the differences. And we all know the big differences. The House is at seven hundred and seventy million, the Senate has a hundred and fifty million. And so they have a tough job in front of them to try to find a compromise. They expect that to take a couple of weeks, which will put us right up to the deadline of the closure of the session in the middle of May. Despite the fact that we don't know exactly what we're going to get from the state, we do have to continue our staffing plan and our budgeting, and that is ongoing. So we, as the girls will tell you, they all had to register. They all had to kind of pick their classes for next year, and so that's all done. And we're trying to put together a staffing plan that fits our enrollment and our budget and also our students' desires for their classes. And we're getting very close to being able to have that presented to you. As I have stated in previous board meetings, we are the recipient of some Escher dollars, but those Escher dollars do have to be spent in certain ways with twenty percent of it, what I call rebound learning. I'm not going to call it learning loss. I'm going to call it rebound learning, and that is our summer school and those types of activities. And so we're putting together a plan for that, and that will be a part of our budget presentation, May-June. Our request for proposal update. So our facilities and grounds team did meet last week, and we developed a plan to look further into six of the firms that submitted, six of the thirteen firms that submitted. So over the next couple, three weeks, those seven or eight board, seven or eight committee members will be looking into the different companies that we have narrowed it down to, and we'll be discussing that and then bringing two or three firms to the board for interview in June. So we will be needing to look at our calendars on a night where we can bring those two or three.
Their discussion, they have like a separate meeting?
Yes, yes.
Late May, early June.
So if there's maybe a calendar date that we could try to coordinate to try and get this process moving a little bit.
Sure.
Maybe late May, early June.
Okay.
And then my last update is, I should say, second to the last update, prom and graduation. So we are moving forward with prom. We are going to have a grand march, and there are going to be some activities to go along with that, including some music, dance, food, games, weather permitting, both inside and outside. So that grand march starts at four o'clock with activities after, I think, starting around five-thirty and running till about nine. And currently, graduation is now set for June fifth at six o'clock, and we will be on the football field outside so that we can invite as many guests as possible per family. We're not putting a number out there yet of how many tickets, for example, that each graduate will be able to have because we're hoping that by then, we'll be loosened up. And so if I had to guess today, it would be two to three per graduate, but hopefully by the end of May, we'll be looking at three to four. Lastly, that's, I did not have this on my agenda, but I do want to make sure that we're thinking about the school in Plymouth. Today Plymouth's Middle School had a student shooting. And then also, I want to make sure that we're thinking of the elementary school in Marshall, which they had a death of a first grader due to COVID complications. And I actually did some pre-student teaching at that school in Marshall, so I'm familiar with that school. So just wanted to have those two reminders to keep those schools in our thoughts. It's difficult, to say the least.
All right, anything else? Okay, then moving on to the board committee reports. And for those that aren't present, if you're on the same committee as the board member that's not here, if you could try to report. And so we'll start with Jennifer, and I think that would be technology. That's usually Chuck.
Chuck's technology.
Yeah, but he's not here, so if you can, I don't know if you can.
Oh, highlight for the technology.
Yeah.
Not prepared for that, I guess.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry. I could babble long, but nobody wants to hear that. So I serve on the Booster Club Committee, and the meeting that we had earlier this month was nearly mirrored the presentation we had at our last board meeting. So I don't really have anything more informational to offer. So for anybody that saw that board meeting, they provided a presentation on the improvements for the stadium upgrade, and that's basically what was discussed at the Booster Club meeting in addition to some financials. I also attended the Community Ed Advisory Council meeting on April seventh. The brochure went out a couple of weeks ago. Registration is open. Most of the classes and recreation are being offered in person, which I personally was very pleased to hear that. And also, we are looking for, I'm going to do a shameless plug. So we're looking for community input for future programming for community ed, and we are going to be hosting a meeting essentially open to whoever would like to participate May nineteenth from four-thirty to five-thirty in the DAF Commons. Or if you'd like to attend virtually, you can just reach out to Stephanie Hillman about that. So that's what I have.
All right. I'll, go ahead, Lynn. You're next.
Negotiations hasn't really started yet. We'll be meeting soon on that. I was not able to attend any of the C meetings that have been going on, but I have been watching the updates, and they're very similar to what Brad shared earlier that there's a long distance between what the House says approved for financial changes in our budget compared to the Senate. The House bill would give us two percent and two percent, and the Senate would be zero and zero and put money into other areas. So it's going to be a really tough conference committee.
Yeah. One thing that C does really like, the Schools for Equity and Education, is that Senator Chamberlain has offered some more money for equalization, and that is one of the areas that would definitely benefit Riquori as we do lose dollars compared to other schools in equalization funds, so.
But overall, we really need money in the formula.
Correct.
Chuck isn't here, so I'll just talk about policy. We met the first Wednesday of the month, and I think we've covered all of the policies. So at this point, what you're seeing come through is sort of the finality of our work for the year. And then I don't think we will be meeting as a policy committee until next
July.
July, unless there's something that comes up that needs addressing. And then I have the Minnesota State High School League. As Brad alluded to, there was some change in the mask wearing. So with outdoor sports, so that's allowing some of the outdoor sports to have mask wearing. So that's good. And then lastly, the Benton Stearns Education. We had our meeting last week, Wednesday, and there were a few items. We did approve some additions that was reviewed by all the superintendents within the Benton Stearns District based upon sort of the growth of the program. And so there'll be some additional behavioral analyst time, special ed teacher time, occupational therapist, a supervisor for the pioneers and ASD program. So there's a fair amount of adds, but also there's a large need with the growth of those levels of programs. So rest assured that there was lots of discussion from all of the superintendents prior to approval of those positions. But there's lots of excitement because of that. And again, with the growth, there is opportunity for us to potentially bring in students outside of the six-member districts, which then creates revenue for us too. So that would be good. But we have needs here within our six districts, so we want to make sure we meet in those first. Otherwise, the other item that was sort of an important note is that referrals from the Help Me Grow program is down thirty to thirty-five percent. So that's sort of the zero-to-three, three-to-five-year-old. There's also been a significant drop in childhood, really childhood screening, like twenty-six percent. So there's concern that there's going to be a big boom potentially because a lot of kids are getting missed and they're not getting screened. Also, important to try and catch them when they're younger because that's when you're going to have the most impact. And reimbursement is also better for those younger ages. So just sort of like some, lots of questions like, where is this going to go? And where's this going to lead because of those significant drops? Because the kids are out there. It's just, how can we get to them? So some discussion about that. That's probably the other big point that's coming from Benton Stearns. So, and I think the other ones, I'm not on any of Kara's. Are you, Brad, can you comment on any of the teaching and learning? Or is there someone on teaching and learning?
Well, the teaching and learning, you approved their action tonight.
And then media or ECFE, Stearns County?
Stearns County family, we don't meet till May-June when the new collaborative projects are submitted. So there won't be reports on that until either June or July, depending on when those get approved.
Okay. And then Sunny, your committees?
The only committee that I report on that met is facilities and grounds. We met last Wednesday. We talked about a couple of things, but most of that meeting was focused on the RFP. One other topic that we discussed was the facility rental fees for the stadium or the field with the added turf. And if I remember correctly, we agreed to a seven percent model. Is that right?
Yes.
Or that's what we're?
Seven percent, but rounded up to like the nearest dollar, or rounded down to the nearest dollar.
Yep. And that has been reviewed and discussed with CSA, YSA, and the HEAT program, which we're both in agreement with paying that increased fee. As far as the RFP discussion, Brad touched on that. We have narrowed it down to six potential firms. We're going to be doing some initial reference checks on those firms, and then we'll be meeting to discuss the information that we receive at our next meeting on, or not our next meeting, is that our next meeting, May nineteenth? Yes. May seventeenth, something like that. With the idea that we would have a special session of the board to interview the top two or three firms after we work through that process. And that's all I have.
And Emily, do you have any report from Student Senate?
Yes, at our last meeting, we talked about a few activities we could potentially try doing, a few volunteer opportunities. And we do have two students that are interested in becoming student representatives on the school board next year. They, I believe, are attending the next meeting with me.
Wonderful.
Right.
The next meeting is your last meeting, is that right? May?
Yes, either that one or the second meeting in May.
And you will definitely be missed. Four years you've been here, so that's wonderful. So, okay. Thank you, members, for the report. Budget comparison report.
Yeah, unfortunately, Beth's not able to be with us tonight. I can do the best I can answer any questions, but again, you see the detail there. The news is still good that we're still doing well budget-wise. We're still on track. But we will, again, continue to proceed with caution as we finish out the school year. So it's really, really is amazing that our buildings have been able to, and our directors have been able to manage the budget in this year, but we have done a really nice job of watching what we're doing to make sure that we're not overspending. And yet, at the same time, making sure that we give our students what they need when they're in the classrooms.
Any questions on the budget comparison report? Otherwise, upcoming events. We are at the board meeting, so the policy meeting on the fifth will be canceled because we've covered all the policies for this school year and the review. And then technology, we'll be meeting on the fifth. We'll have a board meeting on the seventeenth. Of note to the public, that board meeting will be in the Innovation Center over in the high school because there is an event that's happening here at the DEF. So that's where the next board meeting will be at.
Yeah, we can't get in the way of big truck night here with the DEF, so.
There'll be a few revving and sirens going, for sure. And then we'll be having facility and grounds and the Benton Stearns meeting on the nineteenth there. So anything else? Otherwise, meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.